Clock it's. It's six thirty, so we'll get the show on the road here. My name's Eric Casino. I live in District Two and I'm this season's Chair of the Planning Commission. And welcome to the Wednesday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two virtual meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a Citizens Advisory Commission to the Board of County Commissioners on land use, planning and matters such as comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners, who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. Public comment is allowed on those topics for which public hearings have not been held. So to start this meeting today, we will do a sound and video check and introductions. So I'll run down a list and call in commissioners and Commissioner Simmons.
Jim Simmons, District Two.
Kevin Pestinger.
Kevin Pestinger, District One.
Barry Halverson.
Barry Halverson, District Two, Young, Washington.
Doug Carmen.
Doug Carmen, District Two.
Helen Wheatley.
Helen Wheatley, District One, and welcome back, Eric.
Thank you very much. I'm glad to be back. It does look like we have a quorum for tonight, so that's a good thing. So if everybody's had a chance to look at the proposed agenda, I'd entertain a motion to on that issue.
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion on, well, either would be non-debatable, so all in favor? Say aye. Opposed?
Nay. I would have liked to have had a chance to discuss, but anyway.
I think agenda approval is non-debatable, but if there's something that you want to talk about, I think our, we're gonna, we'll try to accommodate that because I think our, I think we're short today, or our plan is not very deep, so if there's stuff that you, especially since you sent that letter today, I, discussing that would be great. Um. Moving on to approval of meeting minutes for the March second, two thousand twenty-two, we have a motion on that.
Still moved. Still moved.
Okay.
I don't remember receiving those. They weren't in my packet.
They were just on the email.
Yeah.
With all the attachments.
It was the third attachment down on mine email.
Well, I second the motion.
All right, well, there is a motion on the floor, so we'll take a vote on it. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. At this point, we would accept public testimony. And at this time, it looks like we do have a few attendees. If there is anybody here that would like to speak, please do raise your hands. For this virtual meeting, please choose the raise your hand option if you wish to address the Planning Commission. I will then promote you to a panelist when it is your turn to speak and be seen. To be seen, please turn on your camera. If you're dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. Make sure to also choose star six to unmute yourself. The three-minute timer will show on one of the video screens to help keep track of time. If you have issues speaking and being heard, please disconnect from Zoom meeting and call three six zero nine seven two six seven eight five to make your public comment. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to address the Planning Commission this evening? Is there anybody at all that would like to speak? All right, it looks like, I think that's Christie White. Christie, are you there?
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Well, I just wanted to say hello and happy spring. I don't have anything in particular to talk about tonight, but I missed the last meeting or so. I, I got the lovely COVID and it took me down for a while. But hopefully all of you have escaped that. But I just wanted to say thanks again for being there and doing what you do. And you know, I know wireless is still percolating back there and we'll get there eventually, but just wanted to say hello and, and hope that everybody's doing well. So that's it.
Thank you, Chrissy, and thank you for your work on the wireless code in our subcommittee. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak?
Whoops. Lower hand, there we go.
Anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Seeing nobody else, we'll move on to our continued business, which is the post-public hearing work session on the Shoreline Master Program. And I think at this time, we are going to be turning this over to Andrew Defovis.
Okay, thank you, Chair Casino. Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Andrew Defovis, Interim Senior Planner with Thurston County Community Planning. I'll go ahead and share my screen and launch a PowerPoint. All right, which hopefully y'all are seeing. Okay, no surprise to anyone. Tonight, we're going to continue working through the Shoreline Environment Designation Review Request that we received from members of the public during the Shoreline Master Program public hearing. The Planning Commission has previously been provided links to all the comments made during that written public comment period with the hearing, including those who asked us to take a second look at select shoreline environment designations. Of course, the Planning Commission may propose to revise shoreline environment designations consistent with the designation criteria that's outlined in the SED report. So we'll take a look at some of those requests tonight and during at least one more upcoming PC work session. See the ones there I've got teed up for you tonight, and we have tried to provide you with a little bit more information ahead of time at this meeting that will hopefully help the Planning Commission make some recommendations or conclusions. We've got the, there was a cover memo and then the documentation of the analysis that I did when looking at these requests and that was sent to you all and posted online with the hope that I can sort of move through these presentations a little bit faster and, you know, foster a good discussion and some recommendations. So for posterity, for anyone who's watching and hasn't heard this before, what we're talking about here are shoreline environment designations, which are part of the Shoreline Master Program update process. This, the process is informed by an inventory of characterization, which takes a look at all the existing conditions of the shoreline and then tries to assign a shoreline environment designation or SED that is appropriate to, to those areas in question. And then those SEDs control the types of uses that are allowed and then the permit and development standards that development on the shoreline would follow. So there was a, an SED report that was created as an early, part of the earlier phase of this process that documents all the proposals for all the shorelines. And so in general, a natural SED was proposed for more intact shorelines. A shoreline residential SED was proposed for those that were more heavily developed and impacted. And then in the middle, didn't fit either of those categories. That's where the rural conservancy or urban conservancy comes in. And then, of course, anything below the ordinary high watermark is, is aquatic and has its own designation. So some things for you to keep in mind, and I've kind of tweaked this a little bit. So the analyses that I'm showing you are based on the criteria that's listed in the SED report. That's how all the SEDs were originally assigned. I know there's been discussion at past meetings about how the SMP criteria don't necessarily match what we're seeing on PowerPoint, and that's because for some reason, whatever was ever was happening when the SMP was being developed earlier, it, it did not take directly from the SED report. So that's something that, that I'm going to be fixing before you get that next draft. And just know that everything that I'm showing you comes from the SED report directly. Of course, the shoreline reaches that we're going to look at might not neatly fit in one box. There is some room for, you know, interpretation and given reach might meet the criteria or appear to meet the criteria of more than one SED. And the goal here would be to, you know, we're looking for the, what the best fit might be based on the ground conditions and the criteria. And the SED system. Oh, sorry. One other thing I want to touch on there, so, and you know, the information that I'm giving you, it, we always strive to give you the best information that we have available, but our resources are limited and time is limited on, you know, what I can put together to bring forward on these. So we, it's a much smaller scope than what was previously done, you know, when we did it for the whole county several years ago. But the approach is consistent with that project phase. It's just kind of scaled down. Shoreline environment designations are just one component of the, where the SMP looks to ensure no net loss of ecological function. And so the intent is that the SEDs that are assigned would support that requirement that our SMP result in no net loss of ecological function. We're going to be looking at maps, but just a reminder that the actual SMP jurisdiction is confirmed in the field when someone applies for a project. And then, of course, there are other factors besides the SMP that are going to affect how shorelines are developed. So, yeah, Planning Commission was previously sent a memo and the supporting analyses that was conducted by staff. So to simplify things, rather than run through everything like, like we've done in the past, I'm going to try to present conclusions and overview of the, of the area. And then conclusions and staff recommendations and information that supports those. You can pull up the memos if needed, but try to do it in a more succinct manner. And we'll see how that goes. So this one is a little bit tricky, as I've talked about before. This is Long Lake. And it's in the area of reaches Long Lake four to five and five to six at the south end of the lake. So if you're looking at the left side of your screen, you can see the yellow arrow in that photograph pointing you to where we're looking at. And then top center as a blown up representation of that area. And the citizen who made this request was specifically referring to the parcels that are outlined in the yellow line there. And it shows you which parcel numbers are there at the bottom of the screen. So currently, this area is rural, designated rural, and also a portion of it is conservancy. The proposal for the area, which is what you're seeing there in the top right or top center, is shoreline residential and natural because there's a reach break there and the pink is shoreline residential and that's part of one reach. And then the green is natural and that's part of reach five to six. And the citizen's request was to take all this whole area and make it shoreline residential. So that's what we'll be looking at. Okay. And yeah, it's, it's tricky here because as you can see, the, on the left is what we have in our parcel data system or parcel system geodata. And on the right is an image that shows that this area recently underwent a boundary line adjustment. So the parcels in question are, you know, kind of different than what's shown on the map because our geodata has not yet been updated. So we're talking about the, the general area that's highlighted in the yellow on the left there, but just know that the, you know, the parcels have shifted a little bit. Okay, and so for this one also, I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, some requests from Planning Commission. Last time we were asked to depict how these new lots are actually shown on the map. And I really did not want to go there because I didn't want to misrepresent these properties. And again, we have limited time and resources that for me to be able to do that with any degree of accuracy. And, you know, really did not want to misrepresent anything, but one thing I would point out is, you know, if you want to look here where my cursor is, these parcels here, all these are roughly in the area of Lot A. You can kind of see those underlying parcel lines on the image on the right. Lot B, which you can see there on the diagram, the south or the, this line of it right here kind of follows this feature you can see here, this kind of dirt road, dirt or gravel, comes down to about here and then juts out. So I didn't want to commit these lines to, you know, on the screen because it's, it would be very imprecise and I don't want to misrepresent anything. But I wanted to acknowledge that, heard, heard you thought about that and we'll have to do the best we can here. Also, there were questions about showing the amount of area that was subject to SMP jurisdiction. I want to acknowledge or remind folks that the original SMP jurisdiction mapping did not include any of the buffers for critical areas. So when we're looking at things on these parcels that, that are part of shoreline jurisdiction, the mapping looked at wetlands, it looked at floodplain, and it looked at areas within two hundred feet of the lake, lake itself, the ordinary high watermark. Those are the features that we mapped as shoreline jurisdiction. When we actually apply the master program, that jurisdiction will go out to the edge of the buffers. But buffers are determined on an individual basis during the development review process. So we don't, we don't map those ahead of time. So technically, you know, larger area than what is mapped would potentially end up in shoreline jurisdiction. But the SED analysis that was performed in previous phase was not based on critical area buffers. And then.
Andrew, I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
I just want to confirm, was the staff recommendation that we keep, or that we have Lot A as conservancy and Lot B and C as residential?
I'm, I'm going to get into that in a couple of slides here. I'll, I'll, I'll be sharing that recommendation. Hold off for just.
Thank you.
Yep, of course. Okay, and one more slide for context here. So again, on the right now, we're looking at the whole area in question, but blown up or, well, zoomed out rather, to kind of show the whole portion of that reach five to six, which incorporates that whole wetland there. And then on the left, you can kind of see that in green, that's the reach five to six here. So these parcels are on that reach break. Okay, so I'm going to kind of gloss over the mind-numbing, you know, looking at left, looking at right on the different criteria and how they match and just kind of go through some findings and recommendations and all that other information and the kind of the, the nuts and bolts of the analysis that I did was part of that memo and was posted online as well last week. So in general, what I found in looking at this is that, you know, a portion of this area does appear to meet the criteria for shoreline residential. And I believe that if Planning Commission wanted to reflect that with an updated, updated proposal, then there, we could accommodate that by doing a shift of where that reach break line actually lies. Acknowledging that there's a gradient of conditions across this site from areas that are more developed and impacted to areas that are more intact. And from lots that are smaller to, you know, lots that are larger. The area in question is a portion of a much larger wetland complex that again comprises the majority of that reach five to six. And a couple of these lots appear to have buildable area that would be outside SMP jurisdiction, but of course, other regulations would apply.
Andrew, can we hear from Commissioner Wheatley, please?
Sure.
Just a quick question. Did you also look, so you did a finding that it meets, that parts meet the shoreline residential, but did you do a finding that it also meets natural conservancy, which is, I guess, what, right now it's rural, right? So did you do a finding that it also meets that? Those criteria?
Oh, sorry. A portion of the area is currently rural, so the most, the cat, the SED that, that is in the update that is most analogous to rural is shoreline residential. So currently, there is a portion of the area is rural and then a portion is, I think, conservancy. So in the SMP update in the two thousand thirteen SED report, at the time, the proposal was a portion of it should be shoreline residential and a portion of it should be natural. So there, there's no, there's no proposal of conservancy currently on the table.
But, but I guess my question is, did you analyze that for now, for, for rural conservancy? Did you analyze this?
Yes.
Okay, and what did you find?
That'll be on the next slide.
Oh, okay, great.
So, yeah, so, so, yeah, but in, in short, for all these things we're looking at, you know, all of the, whatever the appropriate SED could potentially be or whatever the range could be, I looked at all of those. And so that's, that information would be in the, in the memo, but, but to answer your question, yes.
Commissioner Carmen?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that I have a land surveyor's map of this whole area. And that, as I said before, that tree line is the ordinary high watermark, just for everybody to understand, to, to see. That's what is plotted on the land surveyor's map as the ordinary high watermark. Also, parcel B is three hundred and three hundred sixty-three feet deep. From the back of that lot, and it is in, it will be in for permitting shortly for a house. So probably before the SMP is effective, there'll be a house on it.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Yeah, Andrew, are you done with your presentation or did you have more on this?
I've got one more slide and then.
Okay, let's do it.
So, so, and it's going to get to the heart of what both you and Commissioner Pestinger have, have asked for. Okay, so my recommendations here, based on everything that I looked at, all the information included in that memo and keeping in mind, you know, the resources we have to work with and attempting to kind of look at this in a landscape scale. My recommendation would be that Lot A, which is the one that currently has the home on it and is bounded kind of by what you see in the thin yellow lines, that that one would be, the whole thing would become shoreline residential, so kind of move that reach big line down. And, you know, I did also see that potentially Lot B, the shoreline residential could be appropriate just given that it is close to other lots that are also developed residentially and similar in size to those as well, which is why I'm saying there's rationale for that. And then Lot C, which is the, the balance of the rest of this area in, whoops, the thick yellow line, that that would remain natural. It, that includes area that has wetland that appears to be largely intact. The area appears to be largely unmodified. And it's, again, it's connected to that larger wetland feature and, you know, the whole area is kind of interconnected. And so, yeah, I, in my recommendation, the wetland area associated with Lot C appears to best meet the natural criteria based on that lack of past alteration and the degree of function that remains in that wetland area. And again, we're not talking about the upland, but we're talking about, you know, the wetlands. So that is, that's all I have for this one. I'm happy to turn it over to you guys. And I can turn off sharing my screen if that's most helpful. Just let me know. Otherwise, I'll, I'll leave this up for now, but I'll turn it over to the planning commission.
Thank you, Andrew. Do we have any other commentary on this? Would Commissioner Wheatley?
Thank you. Yeah, well, I guess my comment would be similar to the one I made before and consistent with what I sent out to you all today. I, you know, part of the joy of being a new member of the Planning Commission is that I get to go back to sort of prime sources, plus I'm a historian, so that's part of my issue here. But, you know, I get to look at this with fresh eyes. So even though, you know, I, I emphasize, Andrew, that you're very deep into this process. I certainly emphasize with that. I'm looking at it fresh. And from my perspective, you know, I, I have looked at the, the criteria that, and guidelines of the state. And it's clear to me that the sort of default position as far as the state guidelines are concerned for, for any rural area is that the default is rural conservancy. And there needs to be a reason why it would be essentially downgraded in terms of protectiveness to shoreline residential. So even though I understand or, or at least I hear what you're saying about how you're approaching shoreline residential and the process by which you came to that. And in addition, the fact that there was a request to look at that. I think that for me as a, you know, the role that I see is that we need to, for, for myself, as a commissioner, planning commissioner, is to make sure it's consistent. It's consistent with the Growth Management Act with, with the comprehensive plan. You know, there are lots of things to consider and of course, with the guidelines of the state because this is all generated by the Shoreline Management Act. And it's a, it has a particular purpose, which is preservation of ecological function and restoration of ecological function. So my position is I certainly support those areas that you proposed to upgrade to, in my view, to natural areas. But I also don't see why, because even in natural areas, residential properties are allowed. I mean, it's not as if natural areas equals pristine areas by any measure. So, so I don't see a convincing argument that there's a problem with keeping this as rural conservancy, which is essentially the default designation for rural, rural areas, including residential areas. So as a matter of principle, which is, I think, you know, policy and principle is what I think Planning Commissioners should speak to. And when I look at it that way, what I see is not a compelling reason to give it the least protective designation there that's available, which is shoreline residential. And I think as you, you know as well, and we'll get into later from the memo that I sent out to commissioners, I also question whether, unless it's a lammard, whether we should even be talking about shoreline residential for rural residential neighborhoods. So, and I, I've not, I don't know if you addressed whether this is a lammard or not, but, so that's my position. I, I think it should be rural conservancy and natural. Thank you.
Commissioner Carmen?
I, I'd just like to remind everybody, this is not rural. This is urban. So using that same philosophy, then you would say that because it's urban, that you would default to shoreline residential.
Well, there's an urban sea conservancy designation as well, and that is the default. The, the state sort of makes it clear that the two defaults for anything that, for example, is unmapped are either rural or urban conservancy. So those are the criteria that we'd be wanting to look at.
So, Andrew, do you want to address the?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I was trying to find the raise my hand, because so I, yeah, I want to make sure I wait my turn. But yeah, I wanted to echo what, what Commissioner Carmen said, that, that, yeah, this is in the, it's in the urban growth area. Hence, if, if we're looking at any type of conservancy category, we'd be looking at the urban conservancy. And so I kind of, something I touched on in the memo I sent out is, is wanting to, and maybe to give a little perspective on where I'm, where I came from on this was trying to avoid looking at the criteria and zeroing in on applying them on a specific parcel. And I know that's exactly what we're doing here, but that's what we've been asked to, to look at by the citizen. But it is kind of the opposite of the approach that was taken, or it's not in line with the approach that the whole overall process taken. So that's kind of going back to my comments of trying to pull up, pull out and look at this from a broader perspective. And, you know, looking, so yeah, looking at each individual parcel, I think you could, you could certainly find that some meet one criteria better than others, and then there's a change in conditions, but then it changes back. But, you know, kind of looking at this at the ten thousand foot level, I see that, that gradient between shoreline residential down to natural. And I think that potentially that, that Lot B area does meet some of the criteria for urban conservancy. But taken in the whole reach, the two, these two reaches and this reach break as a, as a whole and that, at that context, that's where that recommendation came from, to not have one parcel be, like literally just one parcel that's less than an acre be conservancy with, with having natural on one side and shoreline residential on the other. So, you know, that, and take that for as far as you'd like, but that's, that's kind of where I was coming from on this, in this specific instance. And it is, yeah, we do want to be consistent, but that's, again, that's really tricky when we take a system that was designed to look at entire reaches at a higher level and try to apply it to individual cases here and doing the best that we can with that. And again, looking at the, you know, what was in the SED report and called out as the criteria there because it doesn't match exactly with what the state has in the WAC. If you look at one seventy-three, twenty-six, it doesn't match exactly what we ended up with in the SED report. Our, our criteria is consistent with ecology's recommendations. Our, our criteria is consistent with ecology's recommendations, but it's not identical. And at the end of the day, ecology will absolutely be weighing in. They're, they're, they're watching this now and I'm talking with them, you know, regularly on all these types of things. But absolutely, they will be looking at all of the SEDs that are proposed. And, you know, we are going to have to justify, as I've said before, how we're meeting that known at loss. And, you know, taking a hard look at these things against all the criteria and making the best recommendation possible, that, that's, you know, how we're trying to tackle that.
Commissioner Halverson.
Sorry, I was trying to find my on mute button. I mean, you were all here, Eric, you were the only one missing from our last meeting.
I watched it on YouTube.
Okay, you, you heard my comments then. I think this whole area should be shoreline residential because of the significant impact this property has already got, has. It's currently being used as a boat across area down there. It's highly impacted. It's not natural by any means. And the other factors that Andrew talked about, the wetland setbacks and all that are going to come into play when anybody wants to go in there and make this area a house. But there's like, I think, Andrew, you said something like 14 acres in lot C. To, so to designate that entire area natural, I don't think is appropriate. I mean, I would be willing to look at possibly a rural, excuse me, urban conservancy for lot C and, and accept your recommendation for lots A and B.
Commissioner Carmen.
Yeah, the other part is the lot C has been included in the section to the left as, as far as a reach is concerned, rather than the reach of all the residential area to the north east of, of this, this parcel. Right. Just by attaching it to the other reach makes a difference. Because it is all residential. 50 foot, 80 foot lots all the way around to the yellow line. And only 10% of the land mass is a wetland, which will impact it through the critical areas ordinance when anybody goes to get a permit. They're going to make the setbacks the way they are, make them not, not get into that wetland. So I would be in favor of rural concern, residential, shoreline residential for the whole, the whole thing.
Any other comments on this particular reach? I can't see everybody on one screen, but doesn't look like it. At this time, would anybody care to make a motion?
Oh, well.
Commissioner Carmen.
I move that we designate parcel A, B, and C as shoreline residential.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to make all three lots, lot A, B, and C as shoreline residential. Any other discussion? Okay, at this time I'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 I think we had four. Did I get that count right? We had four ayes. All opposed, nay. All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
So we got two nays and then did we have one, two, three, four ayes? So the motion has failed. At this time, would we want to entertain any other motions? Commissioner Wheatley, did you want to?
Yeah, if we could, well, I mean, it's a little tough because, you know, I, I, I would be willing to consider turning that one into urban conservancy or shortening. I, I don't have, I can't keep track of which is one and two and which is three.
Commissioner Wheatley, are you suggesting that if we did the big lot as urban conservancy and the other two as shoreline residential, that you would agree to that? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think for the sake of moving this along, I would be willing to agree to that. Even though in principle, I don't agree with it, but for the sake of moving on to the next stuff, I would agree to that.
Would anybody care to make that motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? I, I believe.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Barry. Okay, all in favor of the motion to make the two smaller lots, shoreline residential and the one larger lot, urban conservancy, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Andrew, if you'd like to move on to the next one, that'd be great.
Hey, I will do so. All right. So the next one we're going to take a look at here is out on the squally reach. It's reach, uh, the squally 21 to 22. So the area we're looking at here, and I apologize, I should, should have shown more of the sound here, but this big green area here is the squally wildlife refuge. So to give you an idea of where we are, we're on the eastern end of the county. The yellow arrow is pointing you to the area of the reach. And the image on the bottom left is a blown up aerial photograph of the area in question. Currently, this area is designated rural. The proposal in the update is rural conservancy. And the request we received from a citizen was to take a look at, we county to look at making that shoreline residential. And so the issues that they raised were just that the shoreline residential criteria better match this area based on the, the pattern of development. And because I know this was asked about at the Boston Harbor one, I went ahead and threw a topo map on here. We don't dwell on it, but in case we need it, here it is, showing that area in LiDAR. Okay, so I am going to just briefly then go through my staff findings and recommendations in looking at this, this reach appears to contain a mix, or it has residential development and some modifications to the shoreline. Virtually all the parcels in it do have some residential development. There's one parcel on the end that is, looks like it's, it's used as the parking area for the boat launch that's out there, that's owned by DFW. This reach also contains vegetated slopes. It's mapped as, as having feeder bluffs and the beach has large woody debris visible on it. Based on the review of the criteria and looking at the existing ground conditions, staff's recommendation here is that the prior process got this one right to retain it as rural conservancy, because it is a residential area that's outside of the urban growth area and city boundaries, and it has environmental limitations. And that rural conservancy appears to best match the existing conditions. The lots have not been converted all the way down to the water. We do have steep slopes mapped on there and a stream. And the shoreline configuration appears to be unmodified in many areas. So in a nutshell, that is why I made that recommendation. More details are found in the memo that I produced, but I will pause there and turn it over to planning commission for discussion. This one's, this is a new one, so let me know if you've got questions.
Thank you, Andrew. Would you mind rolling back to the slide that had the map?
Yep.
Thank you. Commissioner Halverson.
Yeah, I mean, I use that public boat launch down there frequently for crabbing and salmon fishing. I know this area very well. But Andrew talked about the steep slopes I'm very familiar with. There's no houses that I know of, and I've been all along that reach, close to the shoreline. They all set way back, possibly because of the slopes that they, they have. But that is, I mean, that is a very rural area. It's, uh, it's got large, large lots. But it's a, it's a beautiful area for anybody that's interested. I guess those are my comments, just to reiterate that, that, that area is well inhabited, but large lots with very steep banks.
Andrew, you said there is feeder bluffs all along there, didn't you?
It's mapped as such. So again, we're limited in the resources we can bring. Round of things, but I did look on the ecology mapping and it is mapped as such. So that, you know, suggests a, an ecological function for this area and also suggests a potential environmental limitation, both of which are criteria for the rural conservancy SED.
When the citizen made their request, did they have any commentary with it? Or did they just say, I'd rather be shoreline residential?
It was pretty brief. It was a pretty brief email. I put the comment letter in there or the, well, what number it is, but it was not a whole lot of, there was not a whole lot of detail that went along with that. And when I responded to folks who said, I think it should be X or Y, you know, I kind of let them know that this is where you can find the criteria. If there's information you want to share, please send it my way. In this particular instance, I did not get a whole lot back on that.
Commissioner Carmen.
Andrew, it looks like there's only two parcels there that don't have a house on it. Is that correct?
I think it's just the one, actually.
One on the end?
It's just the boat launch parcel.
What about the other end?
Um, that one does, but you can see that the house is further back. So that blue, light blue polygon that's showing you the reach, that's showing shoreline. So that's showing the 200 foot shoreline jurisdiction, at least an approximation of it. So that lot does have a home on it. The home is not within shoreline jurisdiction, or so it would appear. However, again, remember, if that steep slope buffer goes back beyond that blue polygon, that's also going to be shoreline jurisdiction.
Then I would make a motion that we, that we go with the staff's recommendation of rural conservancy for this reach.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded to take the staff recommendation on this reach. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Okay, it looks like that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. It's like the strategy is, is working pretty well. All right. All right, let me go on to the next one. Okay, so this is out inlet. It's reached two to three, an upper left hand side of the screen there. You can see that yellow arrow pointing to where this reach is generally located. And then there's an image that shows it, the aerial, and it's lined up as best as I can. There's a little bit of a jog there. So currently, this area is rural, except for two parcels at the northern end and the sand spit is currently designated conservancy. The proposed SED is shoreline residential for the entire area. And the requested SED by the citizen was rural conservancy and specifically for that sand spit and for an area about a quarter mile south. I'm just paraphrasing what they asked us to look at, and so that is what I looked at. So the comments that were raised here are focused on the habitat value that's provided by the area in the northern end of this reach and concerns about the potential impacts of the proposed SED, what that could potentially allow to happen in that area. And they stated, yeah, that it's adjacent to proposed shoreline residential area and that conflicts with the natural designation, which will impact natural areas. So essentially, they wanted to retain conservancy in an area of the spit of the, where the spit is in the northern portion of the reach. So again, all the details of what I looked at in the tables are in the memo. But here are some conclusions and recommendations here, is that a lot of this reach is heavily developed, heavy residential development, close to the water within 50 feet in many cases. And there are a lot of bulkheads and things like that that you can see. There are a couple lots at the north end that are less modified, they're larger, although there are still structures and alterations present within SMP jurisdiction. And that, that sand spit area in the north end of the reach does appear to be more, more intact and potentially could warrant a natural SED. And I talked about that with ecology and, you know, we got onto the topic of doing any of this work at the sub parcel level is, is tricky. It's not ideal. It's, it presents challenges for implementing the SMP when planners have to look at a lot that has more than one SED on it and try to figure out where, you know, where those lines are. And it's not consistent with how, you know, this work was originally done in the prior phase of the update. And that's why I included some of that information in the memo about where possible the SEDs were, they attempted to put the reaches on parcel lines with an acknowledgement that that would not perfectly match conditions on the ground, but it was an effort to avoid having two SEDs on one parcel. So, and also again, not that something that you may want to rely on. I know this was a discussion at the last meeting, but bear in mind that this area is already protected by existing land use regulations. We're talking about a sand spit immediately on the sound that's entirely within the floodplain and is not going to really be able to be developed. And so talking this one over with ecology, you know, Tess Brandon, who's on my contact there, her, her recommendation was, and I agree with, was to not designate, you know, one small piece of this to be natural or rural conservancy. You know, just to leave it as shoreline residential because of those existing protections and the, to remain consistent with how these things have been looked at in the past. So I will go ahead and go back to the image and then turn it over to the planning commission.
Andrew, can you tell us if that sand spit is under private ownership?
I am not exactly sure. I tried to reach out to the original commenter just to, to see if I could find out, you know, how, how's that work? Can people, you know, drive up on a boat and get, and get off on it or what? Because it's just shown as tidelands in our geodata system. There's no information about the ownership of it. All those lots that you can see and, oh, hang on a sec. Yeah, so this is the area we're talking about here, the sand spit. It, it's just as tidelands. It is bordered by these privately owned parcels, but it in and of itself, I don't have, I don't have information about who owns it.
It was looking like it was state land or public land and not under private ownership for, for development.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not entirely certain. And so when you kind of look at this and you can see the rest of this reach, you see all those homes super close to the water, and then you see this area is a bit more natural, but it's, it's a chunk of a parcel. And, you know, there were concerns about the logistics of making that a different designation.
Okay, Commissioner Simmons.
So, so Andrew, what I'm hearing is this area is probably not developable. I would want to get, make sure that that stays that way in this particular case. So I'm just kind of, so if it was a shoreline or is shoreline or residential, does that, is there a possibility that something could be built on it?
I think it.
Right now?
I think it would depend on the ownership, but also again, this area, it's fully in the flood map floodplain. So that's going to present a significant challenge as well. And also I don't, you know, think about how if no, if no adjacent lot owner owns it and someone wants to build something there, how are they going to get access to that? How are they going to, you know, put a well and a septic or anything like that on it? I think there, there's are pretty significant logistical challenges to seeing something like that be developed. And, you know, clearly it's used for some degree of recreation now and could continue to be used for it in the future. But, you know, in, it was the opinion of, of the ecology staff that this is not likely to see any sort of significant development in the future.
Commissioner Halverson.
Yeah, Andrew, real quick question. The area to the east, that's all shoreline residential across that inlet there?
Um, that might be conservancy actually. So the reach that's highlighted here in blue is shoreline residential. I can go take a look. Maybe I can pull that up quickly, but I want to say it might be.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because DNR owns everything below the high watermark and that because it's a tidal area, that tidal goes all the way up, which is why the, the property lines don't show going across. An entire area to the north of that, that creek and that sand spit is all tidal land. It's owned by DNR. So no one's going to be able to build on it or even get a permit for it. And I know DNR is not going to give them one.
And I, I was, you, yeah, so this area here that I'm circling, this is. you, yeah, so this area here that I'm circling, this is proposed to be shoreline residential. As you move inlet, it becomes rural conservancy again. But that right there, those, everything you kind of see there, those those waterfront lots are shoreline residential. Once you get up into here, it becomes natural. So further up in Sanderson Harvard there, it's it's natural, but yeah, in this, the shoreline residential.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Carmen.
Yeah, I'm surprised that the reach line isn't drawn on top of the property line. Why, why does the reach go out into the tidelands?
Those are, it's drawn to the oh, hang on a sec. I'm not entirely sure because we, you know, we have the aquatic layer and then we have it's a chunk of the tidelands. I'm not sure why the lines go that way, but it's digitized that way in GIS speak, and that's where this was drawn back in 2013. I'm not entirely sure.
I would recommend moving it over to the property line, but
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to to go with the
Well, Doug, we still have a, we saw more comment or discussion.
Okay.
Let's finish our discussion before taking a motion. Commissioner Wheatley.
Yeah, I have a question and then some discussion. So, so Andrew, like, it's, I, I think I looked at a topo map to, or did you have a topo map on one of those slides? For this or or something that, or I'm not sure what, but my question is sort of roughly what percentage of this is that kind of, you know, the smaller parcels? And what percentage is larger parcels? It looks like it's about half and half. Just eyeballing it, but
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you can clearly see, I mean, at least in a geographical sense, right? The distance of this reach, about half of it is really small lots and about half of it is bigger lots. And I did, you know, the citizen's request was, hey, make rural conservancy further down the inland. So that's what I looked at. But it it did appear to me that even those larger lots, just the degree of development on them, they still appeared to meet that shoreline residential criteria.
Okay, well, so so my comment is that, uh, you know, and sort of in response to Jim's concern, and I I do not like this, this kind of practice we're doing of saying, well, something else will protect it. So let's designate it this way and count on these other things to, you know, cover what, what the designation could take care, you know, could be part of. So, you know, I don't want to over overly factor in, well, something else is going to take care of this. And I want to look at these environmental designations under the SMP and talk about that. And it seems to me that from what I've read from the the WAC and so forth, is that, you know, if a fairly significant percentage of it fits the more protective criterion, then that's the way you need to go. And that seems like from that argument, it should be, if you're going to look at the whole thing, it should be rural conservancy. But also, you know, in kind of direct response to Jim's concern, the difference in the statement of purpose in the Thurston County SMP, the difference between a shoreline residential designation and a rural conservancy designation is that a shoreline resident purpose, you know, the reason you designate it that way is to allow for further development. I mean, that's, that's the point of it, to accommodate residential development is what it says. There's no reason why you can't have these residential areas, including the shoreline residential areas in an in a rural conservancy designation. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't make them go away. But it is protective into the future because you have to take into account ecological function. So I believe that, again, doing this on principle, what really fits better is rural conservancy. And I I think that citizen is right about that. And I appreciate that they they brought it forward for consideration. So that, I don't know if that prompts any further discussion, but that's my thinking. Thanks.
One thing I would, my, something shook loose in my brain. So just to clarify previously, the shape of that line there, the shape of that teal blue that's showing you the reach. I think it, geodata says anything within that is land and anything outside of it is water. So that, looking at this, that's clearly not quite right, but that's why it is how it is. And again, it's, it's, yeah, it's one little piece of an entire reach. So when these reach breaks were made, so that whole area bounded by blue, that's the area that was determined to be reached two to three. And, you know, the the predecessors looked at where does it make sense to cut this off? Given all the information we have, and then now that we've done that, what is the best designation? What's the, what is, what most fits this doesn't, this reach based on the criteria we have at hand? And that's where the shoreline residential recommendation came from in this, in this instance. But you're right. I mean, it, you're supposed to, we're supposed to be looking at what's the best fit and looking at all the criteria and and that's where that one came from. So.
Commissioner Simmons.
Andrew, can I hear, you said you had a conversation with ecology about this bit. Can you repeat what you said there? I'm just trying to digest that.
Yeah, sure. So, and it kind of goes back to what I was saying before about how all this work that 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 planning commission is looking at right now, you know, when this was done in the previous phase, it was kind of at that zoomed out level, right? At the reach level, looking at up a whole stretch of shoreline. And rather than looking very individually at parcels or a couple parcels, which is what we're being asked to do, but it's kind of opposite of what the approach was. So my conversation with ecology was just that, you know, assigning at the sub parcel scale, so a portion of a parcel or even just the parcel. I mean, it's, it's inconsistent with with how the SED criteria are intended to be used. It's inconsistent with the approach that was done earlier in the SMP process. And it does become an issue when staff are trying to implement the SMP. So in in a future, future years, you know, fast forward and we'll have the color coded SED system on this area, but those lot lines might change, you know, we get better data and all of a sudden it's, we know the land isn't that square there. Let's change it to where it should be. And all of a sudden the lines change and you have, you know, a color coded map without any representation of where, you know, what designation is supposed to be where on the ground. You don't have those lines to guide you or they change. So, so ideally, you don't do it at the smaller level because it becomes harder to implement. And also, again, that's, that's why the previous approach was to kind of snap it to a parcel line where they could. So, but and long story short, boil that down. I mean, ecology kind of agreed with the looking at the reach as a whole and kind of looking at those other. If if the concern at the end of the day in this specific case is, you know, protecting this sand spit from development or further impacts that perhaps the SED isn't the most appropriate tool for that, that it's got other restrictions that are going to prevent it.
Commissioner Pesinger.
Andrew, a question, you, you were just mentioning that in previous iteration, the planning commission didn't do this granular level by parcel thing and, but that's now what we're being asked to do. Can you clarify? I'm also new to the planning, relatively new to the planning commission, and it just seems like we're working on pretty granular stuff that is not really, I don't know, it just doesn't seem right. Planning commissioners should be working at higher level type of stuff. And I'm just curious, who, who is directing that we should be doing this parcel by parcel look?
Sure. Yeah, so the original proposed shoreline environment designations all came out of that inventory characterization process that was done back at the start of the update a long time ago. So back in about 2013 is when those reports were published. That work was originally done by Thurston County staff and by consultants that were hired by staff to look at all the county shorelines and inventory the existing conditions, the degree of development, where there are areas of higher ecological function, all those sorts of things to come up with a snapshot of what are the conditions? What are we trying to protect? Where are the areas where we want to promote water dependent development? Where are areas where we want to be more protective? And all of that work is what then generated the the shoreline environment designation report, the original, you know, color coding of the of the shorelines. So that work never actually went before the planning commission. It was its background. All this stuff we're talking about here is is background information for the shoreline master program itself. It's all part of the package. And the reason that planning commission is looking at these specific things now is because as part of the public hearing, public comment process, you know, you had specific or your individual comments on specific shoreline reaches saying, hey, I think that that, you know, the criteria support a different designation. Would you please consider that? And this planning commission, prior to the hearing, you know, the, there were citizens that brought those issues up as well when they were aware of them. And the planning commission looked at those at that time. So it's, it's being responsive to questions that are being raised to by citizens during the public comment process, which is why we're looking at it. But but as I've kind of said, this means of looking at this and this focusing on very small areas is is kind of counter to the work that was done previously. But again, it's, it's what you are being asked to do at this time. So I, and what I'm trying to do
I sort of follow that. I, I appreciate your explanation. I think, I mean, I think when the public makes comments, I mean, it could be just as satisfactory that the staff then goes and does a review and makes, I mean, staff clearly has a good idea of how to handle these things. I think if we would have gone along with every staff recommendation so far, we'd be in great shape. And I'm just not sure. I agree with Commissioner Wheatley that we ought to be working more at principal level type of stuff here. And it seems odd that we're spending all this time debating individual parcels over and over and spending a lot of time on them. And so I'm not rejecting the public's, you know, I, I think we should be listening to the public, but I think the public just as easily could be asking, will the staff just look at this again and reconsider?
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that. Just to tack on to that, that's kind of why, and yeah, I'm definitely hyper aware of of wanting to move things forward and attempting to do so. You know, that's why the approach tonight was to kind of give you more fodder ahead of time and make my presentations a little more succinct so that there's more time for you all to talk about this, hopefully keep us moving forward. And, you know, that's why I wanted to reframe it in this sort of landscape approach. If 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 the planning commission can kind of zoom, pull up a little bit and zoom out and and think of it on a reach scale. I think we can move things forward a bit, a bit more quickly, but we're also potentially open to other approaches. If if there's a more efficient way to
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Simmons.
I I'm kind of going along somewhat with what is just being talked about here. But I do believe too that if it's not in the plan that we are trying to formulate here, then staff doesn't have anything to go on. They're just, it's not necessarily this is what they're following this direction, I believe. And so having said that, I am, you know, and I get the whole reach idea. But, you know, I've, I've seen some pretty ingenious developers that figure out how to do stuff. And I guess I'm a little concerned that being in there by that, by the inlet and all that is, if it's changed to residential, is there a possibility that somebody can figure this out? Also, Andrew, if if it goes that this one lot is under rural, we change it to conservancy. Does, could ecology kick that back to us?
I'm not entirely sure exactly how that's going to look. I think it could, it could be a sticking point as we sort of negotiate the SMP with them in later portions of this process. You know, they could potentially say, hey, that looks inconsistent. Would it be a deal breaker? I mean, that is far above my abilities to predict. But they are tasked with making sure that that this master program meets the goals of the SMA. So I'll leave it there. How they do that is their charge, but you know, theoretically, what we put forward should meet the SMA. And if it doesn't, they should be talking to us.
Commissioner Pesinger, did you, did you have more?
I don't. I'm sorry. I can't raise my hand. I think you have, I think you have to lower my hand.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wheatley.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure I fully understood what transpired there, but in the conversation. So maybe to clarify, I, I don't imagine that ecology is going to have an issue with a more protective environmental designation of rural conservancy. I'm not sure, Jim, if that was your question, but I can't see myself how they would have a problem with that. I think I heard Andrew say that the only possible concern would be, well, why, you know, it's not consistent with how you've been treating other chunks of perhaps similar shoreline. I'm not sure, but in that case, I mean, why would we even be looking at this based on a on a citizen request? So you know, I just, I think that it's pretty clear that the SMA and the SMPs that are come out of the SMA are intended to be as protective as possible. If there's any, and there's not. Again, I guess I don't want, or I'm concerned that there might be some impression that if it's not designated as residential, somehow that means you can't do anything with the property. You can do stuff with the property under the rural conservancy. It's just that you're taking an extra hard look at making sure that ecological processes are not impeded. That's less of a concern under shoreline residential, which is why I would like to propose a resolution that this be designated as rural conservancy. But I realized that Barry had his hand up, so, you know.
Commissioner Halverson.
Yeah, Andrew, as I understand it, the former SED in 2013 had this reach at the upper end, those two parcels identified as rural conservancy. And those parcels below that were designated shoreline residential. Is that correct?
The, the two, the 2013 process shows this entire reach as shoreline residential. Currently, so going back to 1990, the vast majority of this reach is rural, which again is synonymous with the most developed shorelines, but those two lots at the north end and the sand spit are currently conservancy. So essentially, you know, in in the 2013 SED assignment process, most of it is is staying the same in terms of it's getting them, it's sticking with the most developed SED. The two lots at the end and the sand spit are, I don't want to say upgrade or downgrade, but are changing or proposed to change to that shoreline residential from conservancy.
Okay, so right now, those two lots in that sand spit, the two larger lots that we're talking about are currently designated rural conservancy. And we're talking about the staff's recommendation is to join those two lots with the lots to the south and make them shoreline residential. Is that correct?
The, so the entire reach there currently is already shoreline residential. So that's what was in the 2013 proposal. My recommendation is to leave it as is. The, what the citizen had asked for was that the sand spit area be something else, that it should be rural conservancy.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to address a little something about my impression on what ecology would say about this, especially concerning the intent of the shoreline management act and why there might be concerns other than environmental about changing these reaches to a more protective designation. And I think that's because, as we know, the SMA, the shoreline management act, while it is, the vast majority of it is about environmental protection, it's the shoreline management act, not the shoreline restoration act, not the shoreline protection act. And it also a part of this is that it protects current uses and development. And so if we went through and started making lands more protective than they had been when they need not be, there could be takings issues that the Department of Ecology would then have to defend in court. And with that, they, they probably, we don't need to, to, we don't necessarily need to make these things more protective if it's going If it's going to trigger a court battle for ecology, ecology doesn't want that to happen. They might put pressure on us to do it. So um I understand where they're coming from, why ecology and staff are saying that keeping the shoreline residential. And then knowing that this spit is government owned and will never be developed on. Uh, and even getting close to it, there's other things that would protect it. I know that some commissioners don't want to rely on anything else, even though I think there is value to that. Um, I think that um the staff recommendations and ecology recommendations make a lot of sense. But uh we're still having discussions. So Commissioner Wheatley, go ahead.
Um, well, uh, again, I mean, you know, even though it's not, I mean, I guess one question I have is, didn't we just do sort of a split with the uh, with the Long Lake one? So it's certainly not out of the question to split this. I mean, because didn't we just do that? If I understand the process correctly. Um, so that's, that's an option perhaps. But but also, I I guess I still, um, you know, I do agree that the SMA talks about, you know, it's not just environmentally protective, but it's also about, um, you know, favoring uh, you know, water-based uses, water-based recreation, aesthetics. I mean, there are lots of things in there. So, you know, in terms of looking to the future, we're 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 thinking about, sure, we're thinking about whether people will not be uh satisfied that the new designations are not exactly the same as the old designations, but I still think rural conservancy is the most appropriate um for this uh, this area, because there are many things to factor in. And um, and, and it seems to me that that southern, you know, I'm I'm a little bit unclear about the the southern side of it too, but I just, I'm having trouble understanding why. Um, since it was clearly intended that you could have residential areas under rural conservancy, I don't know why there would be a problem with that. I guess I'm just not really understanding what the problem is with having a residential area that's under rural conservancy. Because the intent, I don't believe on anybody's part, is to further develop this area, but uh that's not necessarily consistent with um the Growth Management Act or the Comprehensive Plan. As far as I can tell, I I tried to look at um a map to see what the zoning was. And it seemed like the zoning, according to the map that I could see, was were uh was rural. Um, that's not a lammert, is it?
Do you know that there is far from a perfect overlap uh between lammert zoning and uh shoreline residential? There are vast areas of shoreline that are in lammerts that are not shoreline residential. It comes down to how that area has been developed versus simply what it's zoned for. So looking at the the SEDs, uh, it's looking at existing conditions and looking how those conditions would be protected. Um, you know, with with the right SED, but also thinking about what is, what has happened in the area, what's planned for the area. So you're right that, I mean, residential uses on the shoreline, they occur in conservancy areas. They could, they occur in shoreline residential areas. It's it's a, it's a density thing. It's a degree of development. So um. Yeah, it's it's the shoreline residential is is reserved for the um, and Chris just pinged me that the zoning is, yeah, it's R R R one to five. So one, one per five, but you know, this, a lot of this development may have predated that because clearly we have areas that are are more significantly um developed here. But you know, we're looking at um where has the development occurred and what's the best fit for what's there? As you know, already. So these, a lot of these areas have been developed very close to the water. They are highly impacted. There's bulkheads all along that area. And so they currently have the SED that reflects the highest degree of development. Uh, and then that's, you know, the proposal is to to keep that.
Well, I'll just jump in real quick and say that as a, also a supervisor on the Conservation District, I'm always um hopeful that bulkheads will continue to be removed. So, in the future.
Commissioner Carmen.
Yes, uh, I I think one of the real problems is how the reach is drawn. And it's unfortunate that it's not drawn on property line. It's drawn out into the, into the tide, tide lands. Uh, but the second part is, if you look at all of these parcels, these houses are sitting close to the beach. I mean, they're they're laid out. It's with shoreline residential, with shoreline residential setbacks. And the difference between shoreline residential and and um rural conservancy is the setback. And so even though the house is built, if you read the ecology's handbook, if your kid swims that swing set breaks in the front yard, and I call the water side the front yard, and you you need to replace it, you can't do it. Can't fix your, your, your horseshoe pit. I mean, they have examples in the handbook that what you can't do. And so now it's a hundred and twenty-five feet, say, if that's what we end up having uh in rural uh conservancy, that you've got, you can't have anything in there. That's the big difference between, so you can't use your property. And replace stuff that breaks.
Do we have any other discussion on this particular item? Okay, at this time, I'd uh entertain a motion.
Well, I'd like to move that it be um designated as rural conservancy.
Right here, second. The motion has been made and seconded to change this reach to rural conservancy. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay.
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 Looks like the motion fails. Would anybody else like to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we follow the staff's recommendation for this reach.
I'll second that.
A motion is being made to uh follow ecology and staff's recommendation to keep this as shoreline residential. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, nays? The motion has failed. Uh, Andrew, can we bring this one back when we have a full panel?
Um, sure, I can circle back on that. Um.
Or how, what do you, what's the most appropriate way to deal with this, if you have a suggestion?
I mean, really, that's, it's up to the planning commission, but uh I I'd say it's up to the planning commission. I mean, again, we're we're trying to move through things here, but if you want to have that discussion, we could, but you know.
I think that, I think that if we had a a full panel, we could probably do this really quickly. Or a full commission uh when everybody is here. So if uh if we could circle back to this one at a a later date, when everybody is able to attend, um, we will push through that one as quickly as we can.
Okay, um, and I would also remind, yeah, I can also remind planning commission, one option, not saying need do that here, but an option always is to not make a, not making a recommendation is kind of also making a recommendation. So if there's a recommendation ever to forward to the board for their consideration, that may also be appropriate at some point. I just, I'll leave that, leave that where you found it, but uh I'm just putting that out there. So.
Commissioner Helverson.
Yeah, I was just gonna make a, a a counter uh motion that we, we designate those top two parcels as rural conservancy and leave the rest of them shoreline residential. I mean, they're highly impacted. They're within fifty foot of the water. They've got break bulkheads right out loud all the way along that thing. Uh, I mean, that would be the only reasonable thing I think we could do. But that would just be a a compromise.
Is there a practical application to be able to do that, Andrew?
I, we could.
Do you have your own reach?
We could potentially figure it out. I also wonder if we could explore cutting out that line and using the actual privately owned parcel lines, because like I said, the rest of that's in the floodplain. And so at high tide, I think that is not looking like land there, right? So we would figure it out if that his, if that is what planning commission wants us to to look at. If it would be more, make it reflect how it currently is designated, you know, then we could, we could figure out a way to do that.
I'll see some nods on that if everybody likes that. All right, Andrew, if you could, if you, yeah, I I don't want to stretch this particular reach out into another thirty minute conversation. But if if you could put something together that looks really easy to separate those out and and make them more protective, I think we'd be able to come to a conclusion on that pretty quickly.
And that would be for the two parcels and that area that currently is shown in the sand spit. Because uh until we figure out what else we're doing with it, i- it's part of the region. We need to designate it something. So.
Well, yeah, first, I think before you to go through all that headache to do that, uh, would the other three commissioners be amenable to that?
I thought that that's what we were voting on. Am I mistaken?
Yeah, Jim, we were voting on the entire reach being rural conservancy versus shoreline residential. And that's what three of us voted against. Uh, three voted for, and on the other side, uh, three voted against and three voted for. And my, my uh resolution of the dilemma would be to say, okay, that's just go back and and designate those two properties in that spit as rural conservancy uh and the others as shoreline residential like they were before.
I'd be amended.
It's, we'd still need five, five people, so.
Okay, well, Andrew, if you could put a plan together for like that and circle this one back to us. I don't think that we're going to come to a conclusion to this on, tonight, but I think we could if if you were able to split those off and.
Yeah, I I think what I can do is come back and say, this is the staff recommendation. This is a recommendation that reflects the conversation at the last meeting. Do either of those, what's the temperature once you, we've got eight bodies? So. That sounds great. Okay.
Let's move on to the next one here.
Yeah, the last one for the evening. Okay, let's do it. Um, okay, so we're still on L inlet, uh, but we are, whoops. There we go. Yes, now we are still on L inlet. So this is reach, it's the vicinity of reach twenty-nine to thirty. So um where we're at here is on the east side of L inlet. Um, as you can see, it's in the Green Cove area of of the inlet. So the current SED for this area is um conservancy. The proposed SEDs that you can see there in the um upper, the center of the screen there is natural um with conservancy toward the mouth of the cove. What you're looking at there is actually, it's it's three reaches, right? So the twenty-nine to thirty uh is this green. And then um this yellow one is a different reach, and so is this one. So uh what we had from the citizen was a request that more of Green Cove should be natural. Uh, and so what you can see in this image here, this is kind of the study area that I looked at. So if this area here where my cursor is, is already natural, uh, the citizen request was that, you know, this area should be, have more protection and that that natural SED should push out further. So what you see circled in yellow there is kind of the areas that I looked at. Areas that at a glance appear to potentially have higher degree of of function and less alteration and perhaps might be uh better fitting with the natural SED. That's what I sort of focused on. Um, so again, the comments from the citizen were that Green Cove is wild uh from the creek inlet to the estuary mouth uh that there are important functions there that could be lost if there was not a natural SED. Um, and that outside the SMP, there's no other protection for this area and that that natural SED should be extended. This is also kind of, as an example, the diversity of emails that I got during this process. This is why I, I got a lot more, so I had a lot more to summarize. Okay, so I will summarize my conclusions here on this particular reach is that um, by and large, the the portion of the area that is currently natural appears to meet that criteria. Uh, and then as a whole, those other two reaches, one on the the south end of Green Cove, one on the north end of Green Cove as a whole, appear to meet the rural conservancy criteria. However, there are some areas um on those reach breaks that did appear to be more intact, um particularly along the southern portion of Green Cove, which is reached twenty-eight to twenty-nine. And so in looking at everything, looking at the existing conditions, my recommendation would be to adjust the edges of this reach to um align with the parcels that appear to to be more natural. And I do have a schematic of that. And again, I recognize these, these are a little squirrely tonight, so um bear with me. So, okay, so in looking at everything here, uh, again, on the bottom right here is just a aerial image of this area in question that we were asked to look at. And in the upper left here, this is what the current proposal is. So the green is natural, the yellow is rural conservancy. You can see down here, this is, this is essentially what what staff recommendation is after the analysis that I did, would be to realign the boundaries of that natural reach twenty-nine to thirty to fit the existing ground conditions. So on the south end there, um, that long parcel that you see, that is a, it's owned by a a homeowner's association. Um, and you know, it's it's used for recreation, but looking at the existing ground conditions, the lack of modification to that shoreline would appear to um um meet the criteria for natural. There's another parcel right to the west, this one here that I'm showing, which also does look natural from the air, but I happen to know there's a home on that parcel. Um, so we didn't consider that one because that would put another home in shoreline jurisdiction. Um, that would be natural and that's not supposed to happen if you can avoid it. And then, so we also looked at this northern area here, and you can see there's, there's, there's a good amount of vegetation there between the home that's there and the shoreline. However, there is a lot of vegetation that's been removed from shoreline jurisdiction and um, you know, doesn't necessarily best meet the natural SED. So um what my uh recommendation was on that north end of the cove to kind of change that reach break line so that it is actually fitting the parcel line. So here you can see it becomes more vertical versus uh up here, it's this horizontal. I'm not sure why this was done this way. This was an example of they cut these things off without using the parcel lines. And again, that was not the approach that that was uh primarily used. So um we're attempting, or staff's recommendation is attempting to rectify that, right? And extend that natural to where uh it may be best suited here along the south and just snap it to the parcel line here. Um, and I fully apologize if this is confusing, um, but that is, uh, that's where I ended up. So I will turn it over to planning commission.
Thank you, Andrew. Could you, could you tell us if the um request came from one of the property owners?
Uh, I'm not sure if it came, it, I I'm not sure. I uh, it's someone who owns in the area. I don't know exactly which parcel belongs to that, but I believe it, I believe it is someone who lives in the area.
Someone that lives in the area or somebody that owns the land that would be affected?
That I don't know. So the the parcel to the south, uh, this, this big, big one here, which which goes for quite a way up into Green Cove Creek, that's all owned by the HOA. Um, so it's a community-owned parcel, and that person may live in that community, um, or maybe one of the other adjacent landowners.
Do you know if that farm to the north of Green Cove is in trust or conservation in any other way?
I would have to look into that. I'm not aware that it, that it is. That's the one where you can kind of see that it looks a little, there, there is some degree of um natural state to that. But um, I was not recommending that we take that part of the way into the parcel and then make the rest of it rural conservancy, trying to stick to zoomed out parcel level, what's the best fit here? And that's where I came up with just kind of reorder, reorienting that to the parcel line.
But you don't think, could, and I could very well be wrong on this, but I want to think that back in the early twenty-tens, that might have been one of the Conservation Futures spots that got picked up by Capital Land Trust. But I don't remember if that's one or not.
I don't think so. I think this one is privately owned. Um, I'm trying to go there now on geodata, but I, it may be in trust from a, just a, it's a, it is a, it's in a family trust. So it's privately owned in a family trust. This is not a uh Conservation Futures property. I'm, I am
Okay.
Very well.
Well, yeah. Can I just get, I'm sorry, can I interrupt?
Can I just get, I'm sorry, can I interrupt? Which property are we talking about here? The one on the south side? The north side, that one. Okay.
Yeah, this is one in my analysis, and I think if you read the memo, I talked about how portions of that property did appear to better meet natural, but an attempt was made to, you know, pull up and do things based on the, the parcel level and not, not confuse it or make that break, um, mid parcel. Because you do see a significant amount of vegetation clearing and a structure within, within that shoreline jurisdiction, within that two hundred feet. Um, where the natural, um, buffer would go to. So that was kind of my, my thinking there.
Do we have any other discussion on this issue? Commissioner Wheatley.
Yeah, well, I mean, well, first, so, uh, scale wise, what is like, can you just use your cursor to show what two hundred feet looks like on this map roughly?
I can attempt to, uh, hang on. Well, uh, well, sure. So looking over here, this, the, the band that you see, the band of color is two hundred feet. Cause it's, that's showing shoreline jurisdiction, uh, and I, but you know, this, this might be a little bit more zoomed in on this over here because one came from, I, I'm not sure if they're the exact same size or not, and, and then I also resized them to fit them in the slide. But I will say this, so two hundred feet. Okay, here's, here's, this might be helpful. Uh, if you see this house right here where my cursor is.
Yeah.
Um, and then you look over here and you see the same house. And it's outside of shoreline jurisdiction. So right where I'm pointing, would, that would appear to be approximately two hundred feet from that point to the water.
So the two hundred feet would sort of cover that, what looks like it might be a barn or something?
Uh, but yeah, yes, it would, it, it would. And so that, that was part of my analysis was if we did, or we, we county did a natural designation on that parcel that has the, the barn or residential structure on it. We would be bringing existing structures and existing area that has been altered into the natural SED. And that appears to be inconsistent with that.
Well, I guess, uh, my concern, which sounds like it was yours as well, is that since, you know, the, the issue of extending was raised because of the natural function of the cove. I mean, unfortunately, it looks like the north side is where a lot of that function happens. You've got, it looks like, um, you know, sort of sand spit sort of stuff going on there. So that's a bit of a concern, but, um, yeah, I mean, I guess that, that worries me. Um, but I'm always happy to see an extension of the natural area. I mean, it looks like what you're saying, I, uh, cause I was a little confused when I was looking at it. So you're just proposing to add on more one more parcel or two more parcels?
It's, yeah.
Two more parcels?
Yes, so, uh, kind of where I'm putting my cursor here, like this line as sort of ends now. And I would be proposing to extend it to this line right there.
To that and not to the net. Okay, what's the parcel?
Was, because this parcel where my cursor is, that already has a home on it that would be inside of shoreline jurisdiction. Uh, and we try to avoid that. This parcel, yes, it has a home on it, but that home appears to be outside of the actual shoreline jurisdiction. So.
Okay.
It, you know, in a nutshell, looking at this whole study area and just trying to figure out if, if we're trying to use parcel lines as a guide, which additional parcels appear to meet natural, which did I look at and didn't need it? You know, that's, yeah. And then the crude drawing on the bottom left is where I ended up.
Commissioner Carmen, did you have something or did that answer your question?
Well, it, it may be a little bit outside. It's much like what you were asking, Eric, is I have been under the assumption that we were looking at these parcels as from a property owner requesting that their parcel be changed one way or the other. But it sounds to me as though it could just be Joe Public saying, hey, I think this area ought to be and has nothing to do with the homeowner. And, and I thought the purpose of this review is to give actual property owners an opportunity. Those who have been up zoned or whatever you want to call it. An opportunity to, to be heard prior to having it cast in stone. So they don't have to go hire an attorney and go to court in order to get it changed. But if we don't know whether these people own a parcel here.
Well, Doug, I, I hate not to interrupt too much here, but I think in this particular case, the request was to take this HOA land and change it to natural. And I personally don't see a problem with that, especially because HOA land is not developable anyways. They're not going to ever build houses on it anyways. So changing that to, and I think that Green Cove is a feature that really deserves protection. So and I understand Andrew's position of making the northern parcel not natural, but quite frankly, if the northern parcel was natural as well, I would not argue that. I understand the, the logistics behind that one, and I'm probably out of favor on that particular one. But I, I think that the, the value of Green Cove is very high. And I'm certainly going to support making the HOA parcel, um, natural. And if somehow the farm turned natural too, I would not, I would not fight that.
And as a clarification, if I might, uh, just when we say the farm, uh, or this developed parcel to the north, it does also include this little chunk here. So just FYI, it's.
You though, isn't it? Or that's undeveloped, isn't it?
It's like, it's the same ownership though. So it is the same ownership. So, yeah, I was just.
But it does look like if, if that, if that northern parcel did get moved into natural, when you look at the, uh, two hundred foot line and that second building, there's still a lot of land on that parcel that is very usable to the family trust. But, um, I, I, I see high value in, in keeping Green Cove as intact as we can. Uh, Commissioner Halverson.
Yeah, uh, Andrew, it's my understanding that when you, uh, change the, uh, SEDs on this, you're going to have to notify the property owners of that change. And give them an opportunity to, uh, submit a reclama. Is that correct?
We are planning to. Yeah, that was part of the discussion that, that we had, uh, this, this whole group had, uh, previous. And we specifically with the, uh, that parcel on Long Lake, the Carpenter Point Carpenter Park.
Yeah.
There, the land, we didn't hear from the landowner, but I sure did hear from dozens of other folks who said that should be something else. And the conversation was, well, do they get a say in that? Or is anyone going to tell them? How are they going to know? And so given, given the, the number of properties we're talking about here, if the planning commission chooses to change this, or any of these, we can, we can generate some sort of form letter just to make sure they're aware and can, um, at least get more information or let them know what their recourse is throughout the rest of this process. Cause anything that planning commissions recommending changing, you know, goes before the board, the board will have a hearing, they'll have another opportunity. Everyone will have another opportunity to comment on how all of the shorelines are designated.
Yeah, I, I personally feel that anytime we're going to adjust an SED to a higher protective status and basically, uh, prevent the landowner from doing less on their property than they could have done before. Uh, that landowner needs to be notified, given the opportunity, uh, to request reconsideration. So that's my opinion on it.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Well, um, I think that, that, I mean, again, I'm, I'm really, you know, I'm looking at the, the natural uh, character of that northern side. And, um, I would support extending the natural designation there because I think it meets, um, a lot of the criteria for a natural designation. So I would support including that as well. So extending the green zone basically to both sides of the cove, cause that's the, uh, that's the, uh, you know, the scientific thing to do, you know, if we're going to do it the science way.
Do we have any other discussion on this particular issue? Surely Wheatley, did you have more? Nope. We would entertain a motion if anybody had one to make. Go ahead.
Well, I'm happy to, to move that, um, that the natural area be extended to both the north and the south side. So the south side is recommended by staff, but also the north side in order to preserve the natural function of the cove.
Do I hear a second? All in favor in, in changing both reaches to natural, say aye.
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 Nate, do I hear any nays? Okay, the motion passes. Andrew, if you can change that to natural.
Yeah.
And, and please, I, I'm glad you have a plan for notifying landowners. I, I, I want them to have the opportunity, if, even if they didn't do it at the planning commission to at least get a hold of their, uh, county commissioner to, um, express their thoughts on the issue if they don't agree.
Okay, yep. And just, just, uh, for the record, the way that this would work is that, uh, essentially the, the green area is just going to grow. So that reach is going to grow.
You're going, you're going to change the reach line. Yeah, the boundary.
Exactly. Okay, will do. Um, all right, uh, that's all that I have for you this evening. Um, so the next steps for you all will be to bring you back the remaining ones that we have. I, I do have about four or five more of these, but I think we found it, uh, I have found a, a good approach to bring these to you in a way that, that fosters really productive discussion. So I will, um, tee those up for you ahead of the next meeting. So you've got time to look through things. And then, uh, hopefully we can finish those up. And then we're on to if there are any other remaining items. And then otherwise, I'm preparing your recommendation to the board. When that does come back, I do plan to spend some time talking through some of those issues that were raised recently by planning commission and kind of showing how we have addressed things like, um, known. So that, that can be part of that discussion when you're considering your recommendation, um, at that time. But that is all that I have. So, um, pending any, um, questions, that wraps up this work session.
Andrew, thank you very much. That was really good. We're still running a little bit ahead of schedule here. So under other business, I'd like to circle back to Commissioner Wheatley and the memo that she sent out today. So, um, I'll turn that over to her to, uh, lead the discussion.
Oh, thank you. Um, yeah, I wasn't expecting that. So thanks. Um, yeah, well, I mean, I, I prepared it partly to, to help facilitate to today's discussion too. You know, obviously I think it's really helpful to, um, to have a list of the actual criteria from the SMP. Um, and, and of course, um, well, maybe for the folks who didn't receive it. What I did is I sent out today a memo to the, um, other commissioners that is a two-page sort of chart that compares, uh, the environmental designation system and, um, purposes and criterias. There's, there's, uh, what the state put together, uh, with its whack about, about these kinds of, um, you know, very specific, uh, environmental designation. So there's the state guidelines. And then there's, um, the, uh, the draft SMP. And my concern is that, you know, for the most part, if you do it, and I'd looked at three of the designations. I looked at shoreline residential, natural environment and rural conservancy. Um, and, um, for the most part, the, uh, Thurston County Draft SMP follows, um, almost word for word, uh, what the, um, the whack guidelines are. So there's a lot of consistency between what the state says and what the Thurston Conservation District SMP says. But it's really striking that the shoreline residential designation does not follow, as far as I could tell, it does not closely follow the state guidelines, the ecology guidelines. And the really significant difference between the two is, um, well, there are a couple of issues for me. One of them is that the, the state, the ecology guidelines, the whack for, um, shoreline residential. All it says really, the only criteria are, are that it be urban, that it's in an urban growth area, incorporated municipality or in basically, uh, lammard. You know, or a, what they call a rural area of more intense development, but it's essentially a lammard. In the way it actually plays out on the ground. So, so you know, it's very urban, uh, in the state uh, guidelines, but in the Thurston County guidelines, I think it's very ambiguous and confusing because it talks, it says predominantly single family or multifamily residential development or are planned and plotted for residential development. So, you know, anybody that's in a rural area might say, well, of course, you know, mine should be, um, you know, shoreline residential, it shouldn't be rural conservancy or, or something else. And so I think that's confusing in the criteria. It says, um, majority of lots within shoreline just jurisdiction. In other words, most of the lot is in the shoreline jurisdiction. Again, I, I mean, that's no, there's nothing of that, um, in the, either the purpose or the criteria on the state side. And it's also, uh, it doesn't matter so much to the state whether past activities have caused intent, uh, um, intense modification by, uh, that's intense modification and use. You know, it doesn't matter so much to the state as long as there's some ecological function or a need to restore ecological function. So, you know, looking at past use, I think is less important to the state than looking at future use and functionality for, um, not only ecological things, but also, you know, cultural, the other kind of criteria that are there, you know, water related uses and all of that. So, so I think there's a real disconnect between, um, the way the shoreline master plan criteria are written right now and the way that, um, the whack guidelines are written. And it's only for shoreline residential. I mean, if it were for all of them, I'd say, okay, well, maybe that's just how it works. But it's really striking that it's, it seems to be mainly just the shoreline residential. So I would like to propose, um, that maybe we spend some time on that and talk about it. Um, and see if we might want to propose some changes to the language of the draft SMP to make it more consistent. Um, and, and part of that is also considering how it fits in, especially, uh, with the, the Growth Management Act and, um, and, uh, you know, this especially came up for me with, um, talking about the Nisqually area, because we have a subarea plan there too. And that's coming up for us to discuss, I assume. I mean, it's sort of on the docket, I think. So, um, you know, I'm wondering if we might want to connect those two together somehow, um, cause I do notice that this Nisqually subarea plan update is, is on the, on the list. So, so anyway, that's, that's what I'm concerned about is, is that I would like us to come back and take a look at the show, the proposed language or the, you know, the proposed draft and see if we might achieve, be able to achieve more consistency between the whack and between the SMP language. Um, and, and also, um, I think that the problem with the current language is that it doesn't clarify the importance of prioritization. And that's another thing I think I'd like us to talk about is, um, how much is this a document that calls for prioritization? I mean, it seems to me it does. It says if it can be designated natural, it should be designated natural. If it can be designated rural conservancy, it should be designated rural conservancy. Um, the different designations are supposed to be quite pronuncedly different. You know, that's actually kind of stated in the, in the ecology whack. You know, that, that you're supposed to have clear criteria that clearly separate one from another. So, you know, saying has residential stuff on it, you know, that doesn't really separate them from each other. And I think that's one of the sources of confusion. So that's what I would like to propose is that we come back and, and maybe examine that language and see if it can um, be made a little more clear, uh, and whether we can help provide some kind of input on, um, how it fits together with, uh, the comprehensive plan and growth management act. how it fits together with the Comprehensive Plan and Growth Management Act. When staff are sitting there trying to make these, these, these criteria work on the ground. So does that, is that clear enough or helpful enough? Or sort of why I, what I'm asking for there?
Yeah, thank you for the, for the input on that. I, I, I know that Andrew will probably address this, especially since he just said we're going to go back through and do some of that specific work. I do know that a lot of that stuff was done in the earlier days of the planning commission stuff. And the Department of Ecology has already signed off on our definitions and they like them just fine. But Andrew, do you have something that you can add to that?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Just, yeah, just some things that were coming to the forefront of my mind as Commissioner Wheatley was speaking and just things for everyone to keep in mind and commiserate on. You definitely touched on one of my frustrations in the process of looking at the WACs and the criteria and how they're not set, they're not set in stone, they're not black and white in all areas. So it, there is some interpretation that creeps in. One of those things is, you know, the WAC for shoreline residential talks about the rural areas of more intense development or however they phrase it, that's not defined anywhere. You can't find a definition for it. So I, and I've asked for that because if there was a, you know, smoking gun, that means these things, then I think that would have been a lot more clear. You can look at that and you can look at a lammard and say those seem pretty close. But a, as I mentioned, when you look at how these things actually shook out, there are lots of areas that are technically lammards that did not get a shoreline residential designation because sure, they've got residential development, but they didn't meet those other criteria of, of Thurston County's shoreline residential. And the linchpin there is that the ecological functions have been significantly modified. Criteria of ours is, you know, residential homes are everywhere on the shoreline, but when it rises to the level of it's, it's fairly dense and there's a lot of function that's been removed, that's where you consider that shoreline residential. So when you've got those small lots and all the homes are close to the water and, you know, it's, it's all landscaping and bulkheads right up to the ordinary high watermark. I mean, that, that's different than a neighborhood that's got, you know, two acre lots that the homes are maybe a hundred or so feet back. You're looking at the degree of function that is either removed or has, is existing. That, that's, that's part of the calculus. And then, yeah, as, as Chair Casino alluded to, we're kind of, we're talking about descriptions of the work that's already been done to date. So the, the way that these SED criteria are, are set up, they're essentially, they're baked, right? So it's a description of how the work was done that got us to the point where we are here. So all the county shorelines that were in that 2013 document were done based on those criteria. And, you know, that's why when I'm looking at, at these and bringing them forward for the planning commission's consideration, I'm trying to do it the same way because that's how the balance of the shorelines were all, all looked at. So yes, there are descriptions of these SED criteria in the master program. But going forward, you know, the, the master program will have the shorelines already designated. So they're not, those criteria are not going to be used for new shorelines moving forward. I think if in the next iteration of this process, when we do the periodic update again in eight years, if there are additional shorelines that we say, oh, wow, that stream isn't in the master program now, but we have new data that suggests it should be, then yeah, those criterias would be used to, to designate future shorelines. But, you know, I don't know that we can really change that because it's, it's essentially telling the story of how these, all the shorelines were designated as in an earlier part of the update. And, and how that was done, the last, the last thing I have, just if you read the SED report, they kind of talk about the approach that they took of saying, if it appeared to be pretty pristine and intact, it got natural. If it was pretty highly densely developed and those functions have been impacted, that's where you went shoreline residential. And essentially, if it, is it something else, then it's rural or urban conservancy depending on its proximity to, you know, the urban area or the urban growth area. And so I think some of those criteria in shoreline residential that you're right are not in the WAC were an attempt to, to try to, you know, implement the master program, implement those SEDs because it doesn't say anything about the, the, you know, majority of the lot needs to be in shoreline jurisdiction. But if you have a small lot mostly on the shoreline, odds are if it's got a home on it, more of it's been developed versus a bigger lot where there's more room to spread things out. And that whole piece about the ecological functions have been significantly modified. That's not in the WAC either, but that was, you know, Thurston County's attempt to be able to do that work of analyzing those conditions, having some criteria to be able to try to assign the most appropriate SED. And I will take a breath and stop.
No, thank you, Andrew. We'll appreciate you bringing back a little bit more of that information, especially for some of the newer members. So that would be great. Commissioner Halverson, did you have something?
Yeah, real quick, Andrew covered it right there at the end. I mean, I've been following this since 2013. And the SED criteria that was developed for all these properties was in the SED, not in the SMP. And I think, Andrew, you said that some of those criteria that, that are going to be written into the SMP, you're taking them out of the SED and updating the SMP with that information. Is that correct?
Yeah, there was some sort of, I, I spoke to my predecessor on this project who was kind of not exactly sure what happened there, but, but really there should be a direct walk across between the 2013 SED criteria and what is listed in the master program. And currently there is a disconnect that is erroneous that will be fixed.
But as I understand it, and I've been following this for quite a few years, as you know, the SED criteria that was used in 2013 to establish these boundaries is the same criteria that we've been using, that you've been using to brief us on how these designations should be and what they could change to. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. That's, I just wanted to clarify, make sure that was right. Thank you.
So those, yeah, those slides that show the pictures next to what looks like a screenshot of text, that's coming from the SED report. It's not coming from the SMP.
Commissioner Peskinger?
Thank you. I just want to, I don't know if this is a point of order, a point of information, probably closer to the latter. I just wanted to bring you up, Chair Casino, up to speed a little bit. That at the, at a previous meeting, I think it was either the last one or the prior one, Commissioner Wheatley requested that we create some time at the end of each agenda for potential discussion of future agendas. And I know there was pretty good consensus about that. I don't remember if it was a motion or just a request. I know, I know we did it at the end of that meeting, but I thought it was a recurring request. And I wonder whether that's something that, you know, we can talk about. And then secondarily, I'm also just curious about the agenda setting process. I know, I think the chair is responsible for agenda setting, but it was strange. At the last meeting, I asked something about a, a topic of the wireless facilities plan and when that might be on the agenda again. And it was actually someone from staff that chimed in, oh, that's likely going to be on the first or second week of April or the first or second meeting in April. And so it sounds like staff has some sense of a future agenda going multiple meetings long. And I would, I guess I would love to see what is our future agenda?
Sure. I, I think that it, it's important to note that the agenda is, is being generated by staff on, on, based on their workload and the timing that they need to get these things done. But maybe that is something that, that Christina can update us on because really we are not in the position to dictate to staff how to do their jobs. And, you know, the, the Board of County Commissioners sets the, the workflow and then staff does the best to accommodate that. And then we are basically just reviewing everything after that. But I don't, I don't want to start telling staff how and when they need to do their job, but we don't understand all the timelines. But go ahead, Christina.
Sure. Thank you. And we'll kind of rolls into my staff update. So that's correct. We docket items with the board and those items are then prioritized and staff are assigned based on that prioritization. We, the assigned staff begin work on that and we have a preliminary idea of how long some of the research or stakeholder groups are going to take depending on how large a particular project is. And we do have a calendar that as staff we use to identify when we believe things are going to be brought before the board as we get closer to finalizing our research and putting together the product for Planning Commission to review or the end of a stakeholder discussion. And we have, again, documents for the Planning Commission to review. So that is something that is populated several weeks out. We can bring that forward if the Planning Commission so desires and provide you some of the updates of what is potentially upcoming. Just know that that particular, what we call glide path, PC glide path is subject to change based on information that might be bound in between the times that we talk about it. But we bring you, you know, two weeks out. It shouldn't change too drastically.
Yeah, Christine, if you can include that with the email packages that you send us or something, that would be fantastic. I think that might solve some curiosity from the rest of the Planning Commission. It does look like Commissioner Wheatley has a question about that.
Yeah, well, I think it would still be helpful to have on the, you know, the agenda under other business, you know, discussing the upcoming agenda at the very least so that we know, you know, we really have a pretty clear idea and can add to or, or discuss very briefly what's coming up at the very next meeting, you know, as it is right now, we don't have anywhere, it seems like in the, in the agenda to even talk about what's coming up at the very next meeting. And that, that's, I think, probably not a good way for a planning commission to act. I mean, what we really ought to have is some sense of a work plan. You know, I think that's quite normal for a planning commission to have some kind of a work plan. And, and, you know, I think it helps us think, imagine, you know, consider things if, if we at least have a vague sense of what we're going to be talking about, at least within the coming half year and a vague sense of when we're going to be talking about it. I think, I think it's hard to do your job as a planning commissioner if you don't have some kind of a roadmap ahead, however, you know, blurry it is, but you want to know sort of what's, what's coming.
Have you seen the docket?
Well, I've seen the docket, but it's not clear to me how that, I guess, and maybe this is an onboarding issue for a new commissioner, but it's not clear to me, you know, how the docket translates into a work plan for the commission. So, I mean, we don't need to belabor that, you know, now because it's eight thirty-two, but that's just a bit of feedback from me, I guess, as a new commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Christina, did you have more staff updates?
I did. Speaking of the docket, the Board of County Commissioners did adopt the 2022, 23 Comprehensive Plan and Development Code docket. For our new commissioners, we do have two dockets. The code splits out the comprehensive plan from our development code. Although you will see probably us present the information in one big page. But we, they are two separate dockets that are adopted and that notice of adoption will go tomorrow. We have twenty-seven items on the official docket. And typically staff can get through somewhere in the neighborhood of ten to fifteen in a two-year period. So there are a whole lot more items on the docket than the five staff we have that can get through. So the next step is to have a briefing with the board to prioritize those items on the, that have been officially docketed. And then we will staff those items. And once we have that, I will bring all of that back to the planning commission and we'll go over in a half hour period the basics of how we got to where we're at and what this means moving forward for the planning commission.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, we're going to move on to a calendar now. Is there anybody here that might not make the April sixth meeting? Looks like we'll have full attendance. How about the April twentieth meeting? Right, looks like we'll have full attendance at both of those. Is there any else, anything else for the good of the order?
Well, Christina, do you know what we're going to have on the agenda for next, for the sixth yet?
I do. So the Planning Commission will have a public hearing for the Habitat Conservation Plan implementing amendments. So those are three development code amendments that we've gone over. We will also are potentially bringing forward the a new amendment to the Critical Areas Ordinance and that is a targeted approach and an amendment to the non-conforming use section of the Critical Areas Ordinance. And this was actually brought to our attention by our Development Services team who actually implements the code. And they had asked for some modifications to that particular area of the code. So that what they were finding it was becoming very cumbersome to actually implement. So we were finding ways that still protect the environment while providing some streamlined and flexibility within that code. So I don't want to steal too much of Ashley's thunder, but that's the basic concept that'll be moving forward.
Christina, if, if, you know, normally when I see what we're going to be discussing at a planning commission meeting, it's because I get the email or the mail package shows up at my house and it gives us about a week's head start. Would it be terribly difficult on you folks to, at the end of our meetings, to include what will be coming up in two weeks during the staff update? Or maybe, you know, push an item around and would that be, would that be something that would be easy to implement? Understanding that things could change because two weeks is still a long period.
Yeah, to verbally provide that information.
Yeah. Or, or even, even if you, you know, put it in our packet, so we could, instead of getting it one week early, we would have it two weeks early or so, so that way we could at least start digesting it.
Two weeks early to get the full information is going to be difficult and that requires us to be a month out because we have to have, there's process on our end. So if that is what the planning commission wants, it will just take us longer to get through our docket.
Yeah, that doesn't sound good. How about the way that you just did it tonight where you told us what we're going to be doing in two weeks? Is that going to be cumbersome for you?
No, I can do that.
Okay, if, if you could do that, would that make Commissioner Wheatley, that's okay? All right, that'd be great. Okay, is there anything else for the good of the order? Well, with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you all very much.
Good night.